All right, at this time I'd like to call to order. This, it says ceremonial swearing in, but this is a swearing in. Give, let's give a round of applause for our honoree today. So for those who don't know me, I'm Kevin Boyce and I currently serve as president of the Board of Commissioners. Are you getting tissues already? Come on now, come on, come on. We got, we got way, a long ways to go here, a long ways to go. Yeah, two boxes here, just might be that kind of morning. It is absolutely my honor to serve as president of the Franklin County Board of Commissioners at a time where we are making history. The first African American woman in the history of Franklin County. History of Franklin County. Here's the interesting part. We really haven't even got, or she really hasn't even gotten started yet. I am so excited that we have sworn in, what we'll be swearing in today. Someone who is a passionate leader for women and children. Someone who has a track record for impacting not just the people she represents, but being able to think about the entire community. And in her case, it's been the state of Ohio. But more importantly, someone that everyone in this room can call a friend. And it's just thrilling to see what you bring to the table with where we like to go. And the fit is going to be grand. The fit is going to be grand. And this is how, this is why I know that. Commissioner Crowley is one of those people that when you're in the trenches with. So you know how you think about like being in trenches with somebody? And you think, there's some young people here, you know, they say ride or die. Is that what, is that what it is? Yeah, yeah, she's, she's the ride or die. I see the sheriff back there looking like, wait, what? She's the ride or die on issues for women and children. On issues for impacting social services, the way they should be in our community. On issues that I believe will move the needle in poverty, racism, inequality, and all of the things that are core values, not just, not just to this Board of Commissioners, but to central Ohio. And so on behalf of the Board of Commissioners, let me welcome all of you for this historic moment. And I think it's going to be a grand day. And with that, let me give Commissioner Grady an opportunity to make some comments. And then we'll get this party started.
Well, thank you. Sorry, thank you, Commissioner Boyce. I appreciate being able to be here today to celebrate Commissioner Crowley. You know, I don't have a lot to say. I just, I just, a couple of brief things. First, I want to be able to say that while Commissioner Crowley's only been here for a short period of time, it's become very, very apparent in a short period of time that she will make us better. Her short period of time here, just over the last couple of weeks has, it's become apparent to me. I believe it's become apparent to Commissioner Boyce as well. That, that just her interaction, her interaction with the two of us, her interaction with the staff. The, the way that she questions folks, the way that she presents her case, the way that she brings out issues makes us a better Board of Commissioners. It makes me a better commissioner. It makes me think, it makes me realize that I better be on my A game and I better be on my A game every day. The other thing that, that I, that I want to, I want to say about Commissioner Crowley is, you know, last week we had our, our first occasion to disagree about something. We, we had an issue that came before the, the three of us. And, and we were on opposite sides of an issue. And I think you guys all know that the Board of County Commissioners, especially since I've been a member of the Board of County Commissioners, we haven't always been agreeable. And it sometimes folks outside of the 26th floor know about that. And sometimes folks outside of the 26th floor don't know about that. Usually they do. And, and so, and Commissioner Boyce knows this about the two of us in our relationship is, it's okay to be disagreeable. We're, it's not a problem. You know, we're allowed, we're allowed to disagree with each other. We just don't want to be disagreeable with each other. You know, we don't have to agree on everything. Just, just figure out how to get past all that and move on with the business of Franklin County. Commissioner Crowley came up to me after the meeting and she said, you know, you know, I hope everything's okay. You know, we didn't agree on that issue. And I looked at her and I said, it is fine that we disagree. It is fine that we disagree. We just don't want to be disagreeable. She got a big grin on her face and she said, I'm so glad to hear that. And I looked at her and I thought to myself, I guess we're going to disagree a lot. But you know what? That's okay, that's okay, that's okay. As long as we always handle it that way. Commissioner Boyce and I have always been that way. Commissioner Crowley and I can be that way. It's a board of only three people. And that's an unusual thing in government, a very unusual thing in government. There's only two states across the country that govern their counties the way that, that Ohio does. Us in Oklahoma. And, and so governing with three people is very difficult. And so as long as we can always disagree with each other vehemently sometime, but be able to get along, that's a good thing. And so, but she will absolutely make us a better board. There's no question about it. And I've seen that in just a very short amount of time with the way that she handles her business. Very, very, very professional young woman. I apologize for calling you a young woman. She's not, she is, she is. Yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah, I know, they've made me feel very old here recently. And I'm not that old, but anyway, we are so, we are so glad to have you and so inspired to have you and so fortunate to have you. So welcome.
And you know, it's dangerous that, I guess I'm sort of the de facto MC here. And I just, it should be noted that I'm the second youngest on the Board of Three.
Well, that happens real quick. I used to make all kinds of jokes about being a young guy around here.
Well, at this time, we're going to invite our speakers to the dais to share some remarks. And we're going to begin with Hope and Faith, who are, they're looking like they don't know. Do you know you're not speaking? Oh, okay. Okay, so come on forward to the speaker. Yeah, yeah, yeah. She's written a, she's going to speak for about 20 minutes on the issue of global warming.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'm Hope. Today, I just want to take the opportunity to thank my mother and being grateful for her and God for having me in their life. My mother is loving, caring, brave, smart, strong, good hearted, and most of all, hardworking. With everything she has been through, she always tries to keep a smile on her face. I see you showing up each day, even though you might feel exhausted. I see you making tough choices for the people, even if you are not sure you are right. I see you working tires, tirelessly, even when it feels never ending. You are one of the strongest black women I know, and you deserve the world and more. I love you to the moon and back. And we are so proud of you. Whatever you're doing, keep doing it because you are doing it right. Looking forward to seeing what you bring in the future. Congratulations, Mom, AKA the new Commune.
All right, next, we'll keep it moving. Adrian Hood, community member. And I'm just reading what it says. A community member in powerful voice against police brutality. Since her son Henry Green was killed by the Columbus Police in 2016. She spent 20 years with the US Air Force and currently works for the Defense Logistics Agency in Whitehall. Welcome to, good to see you. Long time no see.
Okay, what's my time limit? Thank you for having me. And Commissioner Crowley, as I get to say now. I appreciate the invitation to come and share words with you and for you amongst all of these beautiful people. As Commissioner Boyce said, we met under very unfortunate circumstances. But nonetheless, I am so grateful to have you in my life for the things that you have done. Even in the State House where there's a super majority that is not us. You still show up for us and continue to fight even when it looks like there's not going to be a win. So I appreciate that in many ways, that it would take more time for me to explain than sitting here. What you do for the community, I have to be honest, came at a time when my faith in elected officials was not. And you brought something back. And I appreciate that. I really appreciate that. Because the things that I have been advocating for are not just for my son. They are for our community. They are for every single black man here and beyond that is in this community. And it's necessary, and you believed in that. And so I truly, truly appreciate that. As I told you when I spoke to you on the phone, when you let me know what it was that you intended to do. I believed in that. Then I believe in that now. And for one very specific reason, though there are many, because you have walked it. And there is a difference in hearing somebody's story and actually experiencing that story. It is absolutely different. So I look forward to what God does through you and for you in this space. I always tell you, I got your back. They give you problems, I got your back. I will come see y'all. No, but I really do look forward to what God does for you. I'm looking forward to the changes in our community across Franklin County. I know that you will go in with those experiences, making those tough decisions. Because that's a hard place to be in. But I tell you all the time with God, all things are possible. And you can do nothing without him. And he is for you. And we really appreciate that. I will be your prayer warrior and I will be your prayer partner. God bless you.
Y'all couldn't see her face when she turned and said, if they give you problems. And she really meant that. Next, we don't, we don't want those problems, not at all. Next, State Representative Dontavious Gerald, representing the House District 25.
Good afternoon, everybody. I am truly honored and privileged to be here to provide some words, remarks, and also to uplift my dear friend, Commissioner Crowley. I've known her now for, I would say, a good while. And about four to five years. And I remember the day that I met her. She walked through the door, introduced herself and immediately said, hey, I'm ready for state rep. And at the time, I was just a, I would say a kid trying to understand how to navigate these spaces with other people. And I knew then, the same way I knew now, that she was going to be a champion for people. Because at the base of her being, she is her neighbors' neighbors. And as I typically say to a lot of folks, I'm a kid from Cleveland. And I grew up in, and a lot of the issues that I saw are the same things I'm fighting for. And for a kid from Youngstown, I knew that she grew up saying that it's going to take someone with lived experience to change the systemic realities our neighborhoods are facing. I want to do something before I close. And it's going to be a group exercise. So if you bear with me, for any person who's ever been impacted by Erica's story, if you could please stand. Any person who's been impacted by the legislation she's introduced, if you can please stand. Any person who has had any connection with Commissioner Crowley, if you could please stand. Any person who's been inspired by Commissioner Crowley, if you can please stand. And lastly, any person that, when you think about what can be, you see her as a change agent. If you can please stand. This is your tribe. These are the people who are going to be for you every step of the way. Who are going to near and far, through thick and thin, through ups and downs. Because I know there will be many as we navigate what's best for people in Franklin County. These are the tribe, this is your tribe. So I love you, I appreciate you, and I'm rotted out with you every day for the moon and back. Congratulations, thank you all.
Before I introduce the next speaker, let's just take a minute to recognize the family members that are all here for Commissioner Crowley. If you would just stand up and be recognized, the family members that are here. I know her mom is here and she raised her hand and I'm, and Hope and Faith stand. Stand up. There you go. And your sister's in the back, her sister right there. Very good to see you all. Welcome to Franklin County. Next, gives me great pleasure to introduce House Minority Leader Amelia, Representative Amelia Sykes, representing the Ohio House District 34 in Akron, Ohio.
Good afternoon.
Afternoon.
President Boyce, he's acting like he doesn't really know me for real.
I know you, I know you, my dear, my dear.
Commissioner Grady, and to all of the people who work for and around the Franklin County Commission. First, let me say thank you for allowing us to be in your space to celebrate a phenomenal woman and to be a part of a very wonderful and exciting event where we are making history. We are witnessing or re-witnessing history here in Franklin County. My name is Amelia Sykes. I am the State Representative for Ohio's 34th House District. And I also bring you greetings from the Ohio House of Representatives, where I serve as the Minority Leader for the Ohio House Democratic Caucus. As you all know, Commissioner Crowley, just about a month ago, was Representative Crowley. And we were delighted to have her be a part of our caucus and to lead us as the highest ranking Democrat on the Finance Committee. She was responsible for navigating a $76 billion budget for the entire state of Ohio, which does some good things, does some bad things, but certainly made the, the budget process a much better process than it would have been without Representative Crowley, now Commissioner Crowley, at the helm. And when people talk about Representative Crowley and the work that she did at the State House and the ability to navigate $76 billion as a member of the super minority, it makes complete sense to me why she would be picked to join the Franklin County Board of Commissioners. She is ready. She is prepared. She came to the job ready. When I met Commissioner Crowley, it was at a time when she was figuring out how she was going to use her talents to benefit the community. And she talked about her daughter's hope and faith and the future she wanted them to have and the community that she wanted them to live in. And she made a compelling case that made me an immediate fan, as many others like Representative Gerald and others have come to find Commissioner Crowley to be. And as she navigated in the State House, not only was she a champion for making sure she had a community for her daughters that she could be proud of. She wanted a community for everyone's daughter to be proud of. Everyone's son, everyone's child, and every parent, grandparents, sister, friend, cousin, auntie, uncle, you name it. And that's what she did. She led our fight for maternal health. She was one of the co-founders of the Black Maternal Health Caucus. She led the fight on veterans' rights. She led the fight on tax fairness. And she did all this while being a single mom, a friend, and an advocate for those in the community. When I talked about Representative Crowley on her farewell speech on the floor, I invoked the words of Congresswoman Ayanna Pressley, who said that those who are closest to the pain should be closest to the power. And when I think about someone who has the ability to make decisions for the one point plus million, excuse me, people in Franklin County, there is no one I can think of, maybe someone other, but some, no one other, the Representative Crowley, who understands the needs, who understands the challenges and can meet them with sensitivity and compassion in the way that all of the residents in this county deserve. And so I am, of course, very sad to see Commissioner Crowley no longer be Representative Crowley, but I am excited for the opportunities that you all have in Franklin County. Being the largest county in the state, your light will be a beacon of hope for all of us throughout the state of Ohio. And I hope that you all, with the addition of Commissioner Crowley, take that baton and run with it. Because we will be looking to you and at you and for you for leadership in this new role. So the last thing I want to leave you with is a quote that I was looking for, something that I could think of that summed up Representative Crowley, Commissioner Crowley, the new commish, as Hope said. And I found a quote from a former British parliamentarian that said, "Not all civil servants admire strong political leadership. But if you want change, if you want to change things for the better, you need strong political leadership." Strong political leadership is Commissioner Erica Crowley. And I wish you the best and congratulations as you go on this new journey.
Right, keep it moving. So next, I'd like to take just a quick second to recognize all of the elected officials that are here in support of Commissioner Crowley. If you could stand up and be recognized. And I think that says a lot. Look, all of these folks that we're going to, she's going to be working with and has worked with. And so give them a round of applause. Thanks so much for being here. And at this time, it gives me great pleasure to introduce the woman of the hour, the woman of the day, the woman of the year, even Commissioner, the Honorable Commissioner Erica Crowley.
This is going to be, is my mic on? Okay. Hard to try to get through, but if you just bear with me. And I just want to say thank you so much to everyone who has come out to support me today. And I know that I have your support or I have had your support, but just to see that you were willing to show up today, even though we are still navigating a pandemic, just really means a lot to me. And I am truly honored and grateful. I just want to start my remarks by, you know, you always have something written. I had something written like a week and a half ago, and then something happened. I was like, all right, we're going to have to change this up. But you know, that's how things go. There was an article written a couple of days ago in the Columbus Monthly that talked about my quick rise to political office. And in that article, they were saying, the reporter, how, you know, I kind of came out of nowhere and, you know, ended up becoming a state rep and now a Franklin County Commissioner. And ever since that was published, and even till this morning, one of the following phrases came to mind. A watch pot never boils. And so I say that to say that if people were searching for me and looking for me, you would have seen the work that I was doing. But it's easy for people to get caught up in like what comes on somebody's resume or in paper or, you know, you have these preconceived notions of what a legislator looks like or what a commissioner looks like or a community leader looks like. And so I may not have fit that mold. And so people weren't really aware of the things that I had been doing in the community everywhere that I went. And it wasn't me doing it, it was what the people were asking for and what they needed. And so I say my success or my journey to this office has been the result of a culminating event or a sequence of culminating events and collective effort from my village or villages that welcomed me in. So now I call that my village or my home. And so I want to start by thanking a number of people, and I shouldn't do this because I'm sure I'm going to leave somebody out, so charge it to my head and not my heart. But I want to kind of start backwards. And I want to thank the people who helped me get to this spot on this place as I navigated the appointment process. So Kayla, Mike, Kyle, Louis, Misha, and Bridgette. They came together as a team before I even knew they were a team. They don't all work together, but they saw something in me. And by the time I found out that there was an opening available, they had already formed. And that says something about your tribe or people who know you, who want to see you succeed, that they would even come together and say, we want to, you know, help in any way that they could. And so I want to say thank you to my Diva Caucus members, my family, my friends who are family. Amelia, Leader Sykes, Stephanie, Janine, and Juanita. And I know that term Diva Caucus came about by some that were trying to be funny. And so I say what people, what, you know, the enemy makes for evil, God makes for good. And people would be so lucky to have a Diva Caucus or to have colleagues who are like family, who welcomed me with open arms. I, I met a Leader Sykes, coming to visit her and had all kinds of issues. Like today, you have no idea what happened today and things don't go right. And I was sweaty, my hair was all puffy. I straightened it, I was like, I'm going to look good for Leader Sykes or Representative Sykes. And I got her and sweat was pouring off and my hair was all over the place. And she was like, just take a deep breath, just take a deep breath. I was late and, you know, she was like, it's all good. And I think from that moment till today, I have just been honored that God allowed our paths to cross. And that you have been like an anchor to me and my career, my professional career. And I just appreciate everything that you represent and everything that you have done for me. You saw something in me that I didn't even see in myself. And I wouldn't be here today if you not took the chance on me and told me that I could take a chance on myself. So thank you. And again, Juanita, Stephanie, Janine's not here, but you ladies are amazing and wouldn't have made it through the General Assembly had it not been for you all. And you all can be the Diva Caucus 2.0. You should be so lucky. We are, I mean, a phenomenal, powerful group. So I want to recognize some community members and who are like my family in that Jessica and Dorian from Root. I advocate for maternal and infant health and I push Root to be seen in this community. Because I, my work is a byproduct of their effort. They sent, Jessica sent a note to me on Facebook. I wasn't even running for office then, but this is, this is healing work, right? She sent something to me to say that Root was having a program. It was like a circle where you could come and talk about trauma, like during pregnancy or work with duelists and you could share if you wanted to or you didn't have to. So she sent this to me and I, I'm an introvert and I try to get out of things as much as possible, but something was on my spirit and it said, you know what, you should, you should go. And I went and I didn't even speak the whole time, but I can't remember the doula's name that facilitated the work and we had to write down, you know, things that were going on. And until that point, I had never talked about my pregnancy. And everybody at this point knows I had a traumatic pregnancy. And I never would talk about it because I was embarrassed. And I felt like nobody could relate. Because everybody that I knew that had children had an easy, easy pregnancy. Even my mother, she'd be like, you were late. And that's why I'm late all the time, but yeah, I was late. So I come by naturally, like I was late and it was quick and, you know, here, here I was. But that wasn't my experience and I couldn't talk about it. But had I not gone, had she not sent me the invitation and had I not gone, I would not have been in a place that allowed clearing for me to talk about my experience. And that was the first thing that I was able to talk about when I got into the State House early is my, my. is my, my experience, which is the experience of so many women here in this community and around the state, and that they needed a voice from a lived experience. And had it not been for you all, I would not be able to talk about, I wouldn't probably be here today either, because that is what opened the door for me to use my voice and talk about my experiences. So for that, thank you for all that you do, for birthing people and for families. But I did not get my healing, what, 13 years at that time? My children were 13 years. 13 years I held on to that. And had it not been for you, I would not have been able to talk about it. So thank you. My friends and my prayer warriors. So I have so many friends that aren't here, could not be here, but I want to recognize them. Kim, Melanie, Tamiko, Treasure Sherbrooke-Sullivan is a prayer warrior and a friend to me who has opened her door to let me come over and just event. And I know that she has prayed for me even when I didn't even know. And then Judge Page, who I can call and will pray with me over the phone. Thank you so much for your support and your love and always having me be covered. My family, my sister Alicia is in the back. She is my plus one. I am single and fabulous, but anytime I go somewhere, she, I don't like to go alone if I can, you know, help it. And so she is always willing to be my forever plus one. Hopefully, you don't have to be my forever plus one, but thank you for standing in the gap. And thank you for allowing me to be me and speak about politics. She is not a political person, but she is so engaged, like she probably could run for office right now. And, you know, she is engaged, and she allows me to, to, to talk about the things that I'm going through. And then my mom, who's here, Stevie or Stephanie. You know, I did not grow up in a political family. We take voting very seriously, because it wasn't that long ago that my grandmother and my great aunt could not vote. And so we take pride, my mother shows up for every election. And my aunt, my other aunt is a poll worker, but I grew up every day. I eat grapefruit, and so way to my heart is the grapefruit and oysters. But she would turn on the Today Show and section my grapefruit, and she said, while you were asleep, the world was still turning, and you need to know what was going on. And so that was the glimpse, the first glimpse that I got into politics or what was going on and sparked my interest, but never wanted to run. But thank you, Mom, for always supporting me. We've had trials and tribulations, but you have sustained me. Your love has sustained me. So thank you. And thank you for being here today. And to Natalie, also, who is my cousin, but now a sister. Thank you for all that you do for my mom and for us. I appreciate you. Hope and faith, your sacrifice. Being so unselfish and sharing me with the 26th House District and now with Franklin County. And if they would have ever said, no, Mom, don't do it, I wouldn't be here. But they are always like, whatever you want to do, your voice is needed. You should, and you make me proud, and I hope that I make you proud by the work that I do. And then to the people of 26th District, I say thank you. I, I will forever be, hopefully, your advocate. No matter who else comes behind me, know that I still love you all and got your back. And then to the people of Franklin County, I just want you to know that, you know, we have some real issues in Franklin County, and everyone is well aware of what those are. And as it says in the back, every resident, every day. I have come into this, on this board, and you all have welcomed me with open arms. Staff has been amazing, and it really is every resident, every day. And so my commitment has been and will continue to be to fight housing and homelessness, to continue to work on maternal and infant health, and partner with organizations who aren't seen but are doing the work and taking what other organizations are doing across this state and across the country and bringing it here to Franklin County, so we can continue to make a difference and impact infant mortality in a way where other places will want to see what we're doing here and come here. Addressing food insecurity, we had a resolution today for $7 million for the Mid-Ohio Food Collective for a refrigerator. But it wasn't just for a refrigerator, because we know that the need is great, and we need a place to store food. That the, the need has not diminished. And we have to have a commitment, and I'm so happy to have joined the board to be able to support that resolution. So know that my commitment will always be, will always be that you don't have to worry about where your next meal is going to come from. I know what it's like to be food insecure, not understand or like why I'm in this situation, but in the situation nonetheless, and looking for others to, to help out. It's been in the paper. I'm not ashamed to say it. And so because I understand what someone might be going through, I would do everything that I can to make sure that not one more person, not one more child goes hungry. When we talk about education and access to high-quality education, we have a funding formula now that will help us, but that's not the end-all, be-all. We can't always look to the state. Obviously, it took us 24, 25 years to get a funding formula that's constitutional. But we know that it takes investment from all levels of government to see that our children are our future and that sometimes we have to do something radical. And I don't think, you know, having investments in education is radical, but it will mean significant investments, the investments that people really don't want to have to make sure that our children, who are the future, feel like that the people who can make decisions actually care about them. And so when we're talking about education, not just K through 12, universal pre-K, all-day kindergarten, should be, it should just be. But the fact that it isn't means that we got work to do, and I'm happy to take up that fight. And so, and then struggling small businesses. I see you. I was a small business owner with my best friend, and I understand what it's like to not have a paycheck, not know what to do to keep the business thriving. And, you know, making sure that you have access to capital will be a priority for me. And there's other issues. We have transit issues. We have environmental issues. And I think as elected officials, I say this all the time, we should be able to walk into them. It's not just one thing that we tackle today. It's something else tomorrow. We have to be able to juggle and handle those all together. And so to Kevin and John, Diva Caucus 2.0, I look forward to working on all these issues with you. And I just want to say thank you so much for welcoming me. It's like, I feel like I've been here, not like I just got here, but that I've been here. And Dean and the deputy administrators and the directors of the agencies. Like, I can't even explain it. I was just telling Ken yesterday, I was like, you know, I was having some issues, and he got an answer right while we were still on the Zoom. And I was like, I like this. I don't have to wait for nothing. And it got my IT together. I was like, this is probably the best job ever. Not leaving anytime soon. Be here. And that's what he said. He was like, oh, like Commissioner Grady, no, he thinks this is the best job. It is. And so I like that feeling, having things taken care of right away. But, you know, that was, he was like, oh, no, we're not going to go any further. We're going to take care of this right now. So you got what you need. And Juan was on it as well. And so, thank you. And then I want to say a great shout out to Mike, who's right there. Raise your hand, Mike. I came in, he served with Commissioner Marilyn Brown for, what, six years? And when I came into the office, he was like, what do you want to do? You know, and how can I help you get there? And has been my right hand since I came in. And I was a little nervous, because you got Aleah right behind you, who was my aide at the, at the State House and was very scared about that transition. But you have made it very easy. And so thank you, Mike, for everything that you've done for me since I got here. And so I, I want to wrap up by saying, there's a saying that I always go by, especially in my adult life, and it's by Audre Lorde. It says, "When I dare to be powerful, to use my strength in the service of my vision, it becomes less and less important whether I am afraid." And everything that I have done has been, for the most part, me being nervous and afraid, but having faith in God that if he had put it on my heart, then he has already provided the provision and has made clear the path for me. And it's not just me. As I said earlier, like, it is a village, and I wouldn't be able to do what I do without my village. But I want you to know that even though I am scared in this position, because it, you know, accountability comes with it, I will put forward every single day my blood, sweat, and tears to make sure that everyone in Franklin County has the opportunity to thrive and not just survive. So with that, I want to say thank you.
And at this time, as the deis clears out, I'd like to call forward Franklin County Court of Common, please Judge Jaisa Page, the Honorable Jaisa Page, and invite Judge Page to the microphone, and we'll ask what the family to come up. Okay, so Hope and Faith, when it comes up. Joining Commissioner Crawley. This time, I'll turn it over to Judge Page.
So I have special instructions for you to stand closer to your knee.
Oh, okay.
Commissioner Crawley, if you could, please raise your right hand to be sworn in and repeat after me. I, Erica Christie Crawley.
I, Erica Christie Crawley.
Being first duly sworn.
Being first duly sworn.
State that I will support.
State that I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of the state of Ohio.
Of the state of Ohio.
And will faithfully.
And will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All duties incumbent.
All duties incumbent.
Upon me.
Upon me.
As a county commissioner.
As a county commissioner.
Of Franklin County, Ohio.
Of Franklin County, Ohio.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
And understanding.
And understanding.
And I will do this.
And I will do this.
As I will answer unto God.
As I will answer unto God.
Congratulations. You have been duly sworn in as the Commissioner.
Give her one more round of applause for this. This is history in the making, and you're a part of it. Thank you so much for coming and. Oh, that's right, we are online. So those of you who are watching online, thank you so much for joining us. Sorry that you couldn't be here today, but we're so grateful that you could share this very special moment with us. With that, that concludes our meeting or concludes our swearing-in ceremony.
Yes, and then there are heavy hors d'oeuvres and desserts outside for everyone, or outside for everyone. Hope to see you there. Thank you.
Thank you so much.